Good evening, everyone. The City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, chapter 40A and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary, who is not here yet but he's on his way, will read the legal notice or state that such a notice has been waived. All applicants, all applications tonight will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office. The petitioner or petitioner's representative will present the subject application to the board. The chair may limit the length of all remarks. All parties in interest will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition to a pending application, and the board may receive similar written communications to be placed on the public record. The petitioner will be given the opportunity to refute any such remarks. The decision then will be filed and typed with the city clerk office. Once that decision is filed with the city clerk, you have a 20-day appeal period. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded by our clerk. When you're at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone clearly and only speak when you are at the podium to ensure you are on the record. So, I know it's a really light meeting tonight, and somebody, I know one couple has already been here. Have you ever been here before? Okay, so let me explain how it works, because that's a lot of words. So, when it's your turn, you'll come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Even though we have your application before us, we'd like you to explain what, when, why, and how. Then we'll probably ask you some questions. It doesn't look like there's anybody, any neighbors in here that would come up and speak in favor or in opposition, so I don't have to go into that. And then, as long as everything is fine, we take a vote, either in favor, yes, you're approved, or you're not. That's, that's how it goes. On some side notes, just for anybody that's interested or that's listening, not everything can be approved. I say this every month, and after the meeting, I hear from other people, from other cities, other zoning boards, who assure me that we are the fairest board in the land, because nine out of 10 times, we, we give approvals. As long as you're not asking for the sun, the moon, and the stars. You know, if you need 30 feet, and you want to build, and you're only coming two feet to the property line, that's the sun, the moon, and the stars. If you want to build something 40 feet high, that doesn't fly either. So, the zoning laws are here for us to make sure that they're abided by, but we all understand, if you want a farmer's porch, if you want a little addition, if you want to raise the roof and make a second floor, as long as it's within reason, we understand that. But once again, not everything gets approved, not everything can get approved, because if everything got approved, you wouldn't need a zoning board. Please put your phone on vibrate. Look, we all have families. I know that, look, if, if we get an emergency call, take it, that's fine. If there was, if there were a lot of people here, I would then say, if you're going to speak in opposition, and then you go back to your seat, and somebody says something you don't like, please don't speak from your seat. I don't have to say that tonight. So, I think I'm going to stop talking, and we are going to start, even though we're waiting for Keith, we could, we can start. And it is going to be number one, which is the application of Daniel and Kristen Callen, 20 Lynch Street. And we have a letter here from them that says, this was dated the 20th. It says, "We respectfully request our hearing scheduled for Monday, February 24th, to be continued to Monday, March 17th." I would like a motion to accept this and to continue number one, 20 Lynch Street, to March 17th.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Number one is continued. Yep. So, we need to, we need to pass that in, 20 Lynch. Now, we're going to go on to number two, which is a continued hearing. So, because it's continued, I don't have to read all the stuff. And that is of Matthew and Maria Morrissey, 19 Roosevelt Ave. So, if you could come up. And I believe you have something for us.
I do.
In front, in front, in front. So, as he's passing out what I believe was told to me, a new plot plan. So, well, I'll wait till you're done. So, historically, we, there's a couple of things that we don't do. We don't accept things like this the night of, because...
I had updated, uploaded the electronic copy.
Right. So, so the zoning board needs time to look this over. We don't, we've never got anything this, the night of the meeting, and said, "Oh, okay, yeah, this looks good." What I'm going to just ask you to do is to explain what changes you made to make it smaller. But I'm going to have to tell you that this probably will be continued, because we need time to ingest it.
Excuse me. I had, I had specifically asked that question, if I should have dropped these off ahead of time. Like I said, I had uploaded them weeks ago, so you guys had a record of it.
Uploaded it to who?
To the, the city, the Peabody permit, you know...
Well, that, that doesn't come to us. I'm sorry to say. I know it's confusing, and I know you're probably saying to yourself, but it doesn't come to each individual. If you, if it got to the building department...
Yes. I also emailed it, a copy too.
We just printed a larger copy, because last time you said that you didn't...
Correct. Right. That's the only reason why I brought the copies.
Through the chair, Grace, can you check your email to see if you can...
Well, she's checking. Could you just tell us what, how you scaled it down?
Yeah. So, we had moved the bulk of the addition to the right side of the property, which allows us to stay within the buildable area. Yep. However, in doing so, the access to the garage will be through our master bedroom currently. So, we lose our master bedroom. So, we're proposing to still have an addition on the left side, a much smaller addition, but it will require a variance on the left side and the front.
Okay. So, Grace, correct me if I'm wrong here. So, doesn't a building inspector have to look this over and then give us another...
Denial letter?
Another denial letter?
If it's smaller, then it does not, we do not have...
But they still need a variance?
They do, but it's scaled down. The advertising, the advertising, the denial letter is, is already, or whatever, but you guys are the ones who asked them to scale it down, and we have done it.
Okay. So, what I'm asking you is, you know, on that front piece of paper that says, "This is what's required, this is what they have," wouldn't, wouldn't they do that for this?
No. They, no. Unless they, do they need a variance?
Well, that's what I'm saying. They're going to need variances, so what, how come we don't have the...
It's less than what they, it's less than how they're going.
It is less, but it's still a variance.
It is. This is legal, so everybody, you know, something is going on, January 27th. You guys continue it until February 24th. I have case law, you have to move it to there. Okay, there. This is something, this is something that we have wrong on the, the time of this meeting.
See, this, this is what I mean. We, we have questions among ourselves that is something that we don't do during a meeting. So...
I guess my problem is, is yet, the legal notice did go out, but it's not for what they presented. They presented another addition, in addition to what they requested in the legal notice. So, anybody who got this legal notice thinks they're building one addition that they scaled down, when in fact, they're building two additions.
I know, that's what I meant.
But you continued the meeting.
Right.
And it's not, the footprint on this one's much better than the other one, because the other one was only three feet.
You didn't have it drawn without prejudice.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that would be my point through the chair. We asked them to do this.
All right, okay.
It's not that, they're not, we didn't ask them to withdraw their application, and we applied.
But through the chair...
Yep.
There's still the, the question of, of the plan that we just received is significantly, as an understatement, is different than the plan they submitted to us at the prior meeting.
Right.
And if we haven't received this properly...
Right.
This, this really shouldn't be on my desk, this new plan. They're not even close to what the original plan was.
With this plan and change the writing.
I see, this, this is what I wish I had for this plan, this. You see what I mean? Well, they're probably going to need new variances.
I guess my point is, is yes, because it's a significant change to what they applied for.
Like I said, I think the...
I, I know, I know you have, but it's not what we want.
I'm interested in what it says.
I don't mean to...
No, no.
This is case law from Judge Manette. The cell phone call, the notice went out, and he said here, the judge said that talented everything it was supposed to do. The advertising was correct.
Okay, that's great, and I understand that, but we're not talking about advertising. We're talking about, now we have a, a new plan with different dimensions and different reliefs, and I, I, I need time to look over this.
And, and again, to the chair, just, just looking at the, at the new plan we just received, that proposed addition at the bottom of the page...
Yeah.
It's not on the original plan, and there's a variance needed for that proposed addition.
Right.
At minimum.
All right. So, you want this to be re-advertised?
My understanding is it should be re-advertized. There's a whole variance, additional variance issue here in the new plan, and this plan's not received properly.
I think the misunderstanding was, when we said, "Scale it down," we thought you were going to take the original and scale it down. So, what you've done is you've created a whole, which is good, a whole new plan. So, we need the building inspectors to look this over, and, okay, you need a variance here. That's not our job to decide, yes, dear.
Just to ask a question, so you... I'm sorry. Better. You asked us to try building on the other side, right?
And, and you did that, but the thing of it is, you did what we asked, but because it's significantly different, and I, you know, we'll take the blame, that we didn't explain it enough, or somebody didn't, it, we can't approve, look, even decide on this tonight, because it needs to be gone over by an inspector. And, okay, so on this side, you need this variance, we don't have that.
Through the chair for clarification. If I recall, the conversation was, we asked the applicant to consider moving this addition to the other side of the house. That was, that was the discussion, in, in what part of the proposed addition in their original plan, what it was being used for, was it a follow, was it, whatever it was, help us understand that. We didn't, we didn't tell them to do it, we didn't ask them to, we just asked them to consider, "Did you consider moving this proposed addition to the other side of the building?"
Which, I mean, you made it pretty clear that it was our only option, that we didn't have an option on the left side, so...
Well, no, the other option was, we could have denied you.
Sure.
So, my suggestion, or through the board, through the, you know, help me out here, Grace, something like this needs, we need. And, and it is my, it is my suggestion to the board that we continue this till next month, so we can clearly make the best decision, but that's just my suggestion.
But we should review the plan that was given to us tonight.
Right.
Just for clarification. We're asking to continue the meeting based on this plan.
Oh, right.
It shouldn't be a continuation, it should be re-advertized. This, this has to be closed out at some point.
That's my point. We, we asked them to come back. We, we're pretty specific about what we wanted. They came back. I don't know whether it got emailed to us, but if we are going to make it clear, they have to withdraw their application and put a new one in, I'd like them to go home with that today, with exactly what they have to do to make sure they accomplish what they need to in the next meeting.
Okay.
So, if they want, if we want them to withdraw their application, have them resubmit it, then that would make it clearer for everybody as to what they, they want. I don't want to do this, I don't want to continue it, say, "But that's not what we said," and have them do it again.
Do you agree?
That, that was, that was my thought, that we have to take action on the, on the original request. We have to take action on the original request. We can't continue the original plan, because that's not what they're asking for now.
You guys understand, they don't need a variance for this. They need a variance for this.
For the front.
3.7 to 12.5, and then on the other side, from 24 to 24 to 25.
Oh, so the right-hand side would be, is in zoning?
Yes.
Oh, well, it's in red, so it's...
Area, on the right side, it's all within the buildable area.
But they need the variance, or...
Oh, all right.
Just for the left.
Just this, just this side.
Just the top.
Because this is all legal.
Oh, this, oh, this, this was what, I thought this was in red, so they needed a variance.
No, that's legal.
That's what I'm, right, but you see, the problem is, is that, A, we didn't have enough time to, we don't have enough time to look at it. We'll, we'll forget that right now, and B, we don't have one of these for this, because this is not our job.
Okay.
Proposed addition is 25-2.
I'll do whatever the board wants.
You know, just for, just for the sake of debate, like we...
Shut that up for me.
Just for point of, if, when we, when someone comes in and they want to build a poolhouse that's 800 square feet, we say, "Go back, we're not going to approve anything." We say, "You, we'll table it, come back with something around 400, and we'll accept it." And then we don't ask them to come back and explain, or redo their application, or redo their specs to us. That's what I'm confused about. I, I don't think that we've ever done that.
Because they, they take that poolhouse where it is, and they condense it.
Well, that's what we're doing. All they did was condense the left-side area, that's all they asked for.
I'm going to ask you not to be disrespectful, okay? If we're asking you a question, then you can, you can answer us. I'm going to ask you to do that.
Sure.
Because it looks like we're going to go forward tonight, but, okay, this is a lesson for everybody listening, because we don't have to go forward if we don't want to. And I, you know, I'll do what the board wants, but... I would imagine we have some questions.
I just need a minute.
You don't need a minute.
What did conservation tell you?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Something from conservation.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll read it.
It looks like just the corner of your property is kind of near the wetlands, right?
The backside, correct. When we're building on the right side, we're not within the, the 100-foot buffer zone, so now they're involved.
Right here.
If they had tried to move the project to the other side of the house, they would have caused some intent issues with CONCOM.
The first drawing showing you get outside the buffer zone.
The house is, the existing house, though, sits within 100 feet of the buffer zone. So, it's existing.
Do we have a problem with this? And you see, you see this confusion is why we shouldn't accept things tonight. Grace, did you get that email?
Yeah.
Everybody can prove it when they want.
And I, I will say, we have been in, we have been in touch with, they have, they have, the day after the meeting, they called, they called, and everything, and they wanted to know what to do, what to write, so they have been in touch with...
2:13.
Yep.
So, this, this is, this is where, this is where...
Well, no, because if, seeing they moved it here, they're going to have to get an order of condition, or, and a lot of the conditions from the...
CONCOM?
CONCOM.
Bringing some letters and things up from the neighbors.
Yeah, I heard this name.
That's the front of the house.
Yep.
So, they now have 23-9.
Yep.
Required.
Okay.
They have 25-2.
Yep.
Required.
Okay.
There's...
They need a variance.
They don't. They don't.
Oh, they don't. Oh, that's right, they don't.
They don't want any of this.
Right. So...
What's this one, though? Right side, 20, they're over, they're, they're over there.
They need it over here.
They need it to the rear, 12-5.
And it was, so they did...
What was, do you have the first one, Barry? The little, the first little one?
Yeah, yeah. Here, here was, here was the first one.
Yeah, what are these? Yeah, there were 3-7, is that what that says?
Yeah.
3-7.
Yeah.
So, it's 12-5.
The only one that should be concerned, right?
Yeah, is that, is that rear?
Proposed, so that is significant.
Production.
Yes. Oh, I know that.
I just...
16, 16-5, and there's nothing in the back.
So, that's where the destiny of variance is, that left side.
Yep.
I have, I, I guess.
Increase the left side from 3-7 to 12-5.
Right.
Right.
Which is, just through the chair, that's what we asked them to do.
Right.
I mean...
And the front, the front are okay.
And we get, we have a letter from the neighbor, but I went by the property, the, the other dwelling is so far set back from the left side. So, I mean, I'm prepared to go for it, I, I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, you, you'll have to go to the conservation commission?
It's conditioned on...
You'd have to go, you'd have to condition that you get a notice, okay?
Yeah. Okay. Right.
But when you go to conservation, you need to mention, "Your house is already within the buffer zone, so it's existing."
Right, yeah.
You know? Your, your house is already existing within the buffer zone.
Okay.
So, make sure you mention that.
Make sure, okay.
All right, so we, we need to condition that with CONCOM, right?
Yeah, approval, approval from CONCOM.
Okay. So, now that we've rehashed this, I hope that anyone listening, and if you have to come before us again, you understand that to present on the night of the meeting something this brand-new, probably is going to work for you tonight, but it would be better if we didn't just have it tonight, but just as a point of reference. So, anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition, hearing none of matters before the board?
Move to closed public hearing?
Second.
Move to accept?
Second.
With conditions.
Oh, wow, with the condition, now they get approval from CONCOM.
Okay, so the motion is to...
Approve with...
Approve with a condition.
Subject to approval from CONCOM.
Right.
From CONCOM. Roll call vote.
All right, here, just see here. Keith?
Yes.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, Barry?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, all right, you guys, thank you, guys. Yes. I, I do too, but they can't, the, the computer doesn't accept that. Yeah, that's the problem, this computer system, and I...
Okay, so now we have the application of William Maramon, 46 Bradford Road.
On number three on tonight's agenda is the application of William Maramon for 46 Bradford Road, Peabody, Massachusetts. Petitioner seeks a variance to construct an addition, an enclosed porch, and requires relief to the left-side yard of 12.6 feet rather than 20 feet, as required, lot coverage of 25.8 rather than 25% as required, for a premise located at 46 Bradford Road in an R1 zoning district. There we go. Can you hear me okay? Name, William Armion, address, 46 Bradford Road, Peabody, Mass, 1960. So, I'm here because we'd like to, we'd like to put construct, we'd like to put an addition to the home that covers two parts. Been putting this off for quite a long time. We're in desperate need of a garage, and then I have a, a sunroof on top of that. For some reason, all the houses that were built in West Peabody, not a lot of them were contemplated garages back in the day, and it's become almost a necessity now. We're getting older, and I want to get an electric vehicle, I can't find, put a station under there. Just even these days with the ice lately, we've, we've had a couple slip and falls going on. Be nice to be able to just drive in and get right out into the house. Now, to do that, on either side of my property, I would need a variance. There's no available space on either side without getting a variance for a garage. Several years back, our neighbor to the right, if you're looking at the home, needed a variance to do the same thing and, and get a garage space put in. So, this would be a garage space. I had put a little side road on the... Um, so this would be a garage space, I had put a little side road on the, um, side of the house that goes right to the back, that you can just go right into a garage, and we'd like a little sunroom on top of that. Um, so we could, you know, keep the vehicles undercover in the winter time and away from the sun, and obviously be able to, uh, access the house from a garage space throughout the year.
Okay, so, um, I have questions, and I have a lot to say about this before we begin.
Yes.
So, um, you have here, on your application, petitioner seeks variance to construct, to construct a proposed addition enclosed porch. I have a picture, because I went by your house, of this enclosed porch-
Yep.
Um, that you need a variance for?
Yes.
It's already built. So my first question is-
Is, yeah, I can go through that.
Did you, did you get a, um, a, an, a construction, a builder, a company to build this?
I did.
And you did not have a, I was told to me you did not get a building permit for this?
I, I, I did not, and so-
So first of all, you have no building permit?
Yep.
You built something that you need a variance for, it's already built, and now you come for a variance. And you know that's probably not going to fly.
Well, I can tell you the thought process as I went along, and if we have to move it, we can certainly move it, we'll have to reconstruct it. It started out smaller than what I thought, it was-
But you didn't have a building permit.
I, I, I did not, but it wasn't, it, it wasn't supposed to happen the way it did, it got caught, I got caught off-guard on it, I was just putting, gonna put a-
But it's a whole room, I have a picture of it, how could you not get a building permit?
I know, and it was only supposed to be like a little sun, like a temporary sunroom with, and then all of a sudden the roof went up-
But you still need a building permit, this is what I say to people, even if you're gonna bang and nail in, in, in your wall, make a phone call and see if you need a building permit, this is, you built a construction. You built something without a building permit, and you need a variance, and it's already built.
Through the chair.
Yes.
He started doing it himself.
You still need a building permit.
Through the chair, um, the applicant mentioned he had a contractor, uh, what's, what's that contractor's name for the record?
Um, his, it's a, I don't know his builder. I don't know the exact, he's, he's licensed around here, his name is Victor.
He's what?
Yeah, I don't know the exact name of the company, his name is Victor, I got Victor as, Victor Carpenter.
So you, you wait, so you have somebody build this, and you don't know, you don't know the company's name?
I, I, I don't have it in my, in my book, in my, I can look up the book of it, the name of it, it's, I know him as Victor Carpenter. He showed me all paperwork, licensed and everything. Uh, so, I, I've had this conversation also with Mark Menard, who came to the house, and, and Mark said he would go through everything, and if we have to move everything and do everything, that's fine, I have no problem reconstructing this, moving things, I get that whole part. Um, I, I still would need the variance, I have to start with the variance from, to at least be allowed to that. This thing might have to be reconstructed anyways, and, and I know that.
Okay, so, so, there's a couple other things. I don't know if, um, can't see this correctly on this plan, but where is the garage? So you, you, okay, so please don't speak, because I, I have to, I have to say everything I have to say. So, here we have a plan, and you have a, a thing here, a, a, an applicant, a legal notice for a garage, the garage isn't here. You built a porch without a building permit, and you need a variance. Now just throw in, you don't know really the construction company that built it, you don't know the name, so, this is what I have to say. If in fact, we, as a board, tonight, said, "Oh, it's okay, don't worry about it, you probably, I don't know, it just happened," A, what does that say about us for a board? B, what does that say about following rules? C, what does that say to all the other people that have come before us, that have followed the rules, got a building permit, built what they had to, come to see us for a variance? Maybe had to have it continued till the following month, but nine out of ten times, if you go through the proper procedures, you get your variance. This doesn't fly. And, and I, and I don't understand why we have a plan with no garage, and why you decided to build something and then come to us and say, "Oh, uh-oh, I guess we need a variance." I, I don't get it, and it's not fair, and it doesn't send a message to everybody else that follows the rules, nor what about us, that has to follow the rules?
Through the, through the chair, I do, I have a question, did you state that, uh, a building inspector came out and took a look at it?
He came out to say to stop doing everything else.
So he gave you a stop work order?
And I stopped, I've never done, and one thing, not even any, anything else in there since. And then I've paid, I have paid a lot of money to do everything else here, which I would have just stopped if it was to take it down then, you know? And I spoke with the building inspector, he says, "Listen, we can go over that, but you've gotta go back to the right thing." I tried to mitigate this after the mistakes that were done from the beginning. It would have been, it would have saved me probably twenty thousand dollars more at this point to just move things and do this right now. But I did stop and try to mitigate things at that point. I will say this, that I went into this, and I got a little, I, I literally had, was gonna build like a little, like, like a screen type of thing, and I had the things at Home Depot that were gonna be, and then the builder's like, "No, I can put a roof on this," and, and the next thing you know, it went from just a little, like, for sitting in the sun, to this thing that went real quick, 'cause, I guess it was 'cause of the winter, and they, they're down on jobs in the winter, and it went a little bit, like, "I can do this in two days," and, and, and then I thought, uh-
Did you, um, did you, did you see a, a license or a bond from, from the-
I did, I did, he does have that, and I know, I'm still not off the hook on this, I'm probably gonna get fines on the other side. I'm probably gonna, I might have to reconstruct this thing anyways, but again, I spoke with Mark about that, I'm like, "Mark, wh-where do I begin on this? I will stop everything at this point." He says, "Well, you have to get the variance, we can't even look at anything right now." So, and that's why I'm here, and I, I do get it sends a horrible message, but I also understand that from the time it all came through, I, I, everything, not even a hammer's been moved in that room.
And, and that's good-
And we went through the holidays, literally, with, with wind gushing in and-
And, and that's good, but you know, you're not the only one that, that, that that happened to, the other thing is, um, uh... As the homeowner, you take full responsibility-
I know.
As the homeowner. Uh, before we go on, I would like to, um, read this letter in opposition. Uh, "My name is Marguerite Franco, and I live at One Packard Road, Peabody, and I am the immediate abutter to the project at forty-six Bradford Road. My husband and I purchased our home in nineteen sixty-three. My husband passed away in two thousand eighteen, and now is a widow, who will be eighty-nine in three weeks on March twelfth. I would like to continue to enjoy my home. I was oblivious to this project," which, by the way, when you build, it, and I, I forgot to say this in my opening statement, "The best, the best, best thing you can do is to go to all your neighbors and tell them what you're doing. I was oblivious to this project until I received a letter from the appeals, the zoning board, for a variance to my property. My neighbor never notified me of his plan, I went to City Hall to see exactly what the plan stated, and I found out that he wanted to build a two-car garage beneath the supposed porch without a permit. He, a lawyer, I believe, knowingly defied the law by not getting a permit, and without a permit, he could encroach beyond the property customary lines of our properties. Also, almost the entire side of the addition, which was partially built prior to the stop order from the court, I believe would overlook my house with three large windows, which would give me no privacy at all." That's important. "My most important and firm objective is that a garage in that proximity to my house would be a detriment to the value of my house." So we don't know anything about a garage, because we don't have it here. I'd like to know from the board, what are we exactly going to vote on tonight? The, the variance of the enclosed porch? Because we can't vote on a garage that we don't see. And, and this should not be continued.
Through the chair, I have additional questions, um, I'll start with, uh, Ms. Franco's letter. And through the chair, did, did you speak to Ms. Franco?
I have spoken to Ms. Franco, not particularly about this.
Ma'am, could you, I don't know who, I don't know who you are, I need your name, please, for the record.
My name is Elizabeth Momian, and I am also an owner of the property. And in reference to Peggy's letter, there has been a vendetta going on.
Ma'am, I, my question was, did you speak to her about your proposed project?
Never see Peggy. No.
And, in addition to the, to, to the letter, the body of the letter-
My other neighbors, my other neighbors I did speak to.
Excuse me, ma'am, excuse me, through the chair, um, Ms. Franco says you're an attorney, is that accurate, sir?
It is, it is.
Okay, now, questions, uh, regarding the, the plan itself. Far back of the property, there's something that says shed, is that a shed? Far back of your property, the little square says shed.
Yes.
To the right of it's a larger one that says shed.
Yeah.
Above that, heading towards the front of your property, there's two boxes that say S and S, two more sheds?
They're little, they're little tiny, like, six-by-six sheds.
Sh, they're two sheds?
Yeah.
In front of that's another shed? Seven, seven feet off the property line?
They're movable boxes that can be moved with a tractor.
Are they sheds?
They're, like, four-by-four little-
I didn't ask you the size, sir, are they sheds, what's stored in them?
No, they're not, those aren't sheds, those are vo, like, container boxes.
When you paid this gentleman to do your plot plan, did you tell him they weren't sheds?
When we painted them?
Didn't you pay someone to draw this plot plan out?
Yes.
And they say shed on all these things, why would you accept that?
The ones on the side.
They weren't sheds. Left of the property, two more sheds. Back of the property, another shed. Right behind this prop, this building that's already built, another shed. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight sheds. Through the chair, I would, I would like to bring that attention to the building commissioner, please, I have problems with that as well. Excessive. And... I'm sorry, but-
I am gonna tell you-
My opinion is it's gotta come down.
Right, I, I am gonna tell you, from the bottom of my heart, I'm sorry. But this could have all been avoided if you just did it the right way. But, uh, I believe tonight, the only thing we can vote on, which we will vote on, is the variance for the enclosed porch. Because we cannot vote on a garage that we do not see. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor, in opposition, the matters before the board?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Keith?
No.
Chris?
No.
Jamie? Barry? Fran?
No, so the variance for your porch has not been approved, it's denied. And, from this point on, you're gonna have to go through the building commissioner, the building inspectors, your plot plan, Dan Terrenzoni, David, and get everything figured out, and maybe come back to us at some point. I'm very sorry.
So the, has, that whole thing has to be removed, everything?
That's up to the building inspector.
That's up to the building, something, you, you don't have a variance, so it can't stay the way it is. Can I, Grace, do you, we want two minutes?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I have the minutes from December sixth, I mean, January twenty-seventh.
Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from January?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next meeting is March seventeen?
New chair, if I could? I noticed we do have a appeal, uh, rules. Okay, well, just, just something to bring up. One thing that I didn't see on here, and maybe I just missed it.
Yeah, the application should be final before it even comes to us for application, it's then, it is, I think if someone's in opposition, it's a simple letter we can read.
Right, yeah. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.